Invite to the poll now, California State Senator Alex Padilla.
U.S. OMG.
Former, former state senator. Former.
Good morning, everybody. Let's also welcome Mayor Karen Bass has joined us. That he's done as a leader and is bringing on, as Senator Padilla indicated, other leaders.
And you know, people tell me when they look at my background that I might be a little crazy or that I might be, you know, not, not supposed to be here in this seat. But you've been doing this for a long time. You've paved the pathway for someone like me to come forth and stand true in what I believe in and to fight for the things that I believe in because these are the things that we need to do because we have lost a lot of people. We've thrown people away. People need second chances. And so I just want to say thank you for not only taking the time to build up the leaders around you within your office, but also for showing the rest of us that we can advocate for the things we think are important. We can advocate for the things that we haven't lived experience in and we can be successful at it and we could do it at the federal level. We could do it at the city level and at the state level. So just thank you for being ahead of your time and again, for paving the pathway for people like me to come through, but also for people like my colleague Ashley, who's one of our deputies here on our legislative team, who was an intern with you. We have another person coming onto our team from your team, Gabby.
Yes.
And we are very excited about that. So thank you for your dedication and continuing to build up the next leaders of our city. Thank you.
On behalf of the City of Los Angeles and my office, we present you with a piece of art because it's what CD six does.
It's a lot of gray hair.
Tell the artist. And of course, this problem, this resolution on behalf of the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, so I do have the amendment on item number 10. And before I read in the amendment, I just wanted to put Mr. Herman on notice. Mr. Herman. I know. Mr. Herman, I saw you, I did not want to interrupt the presentation, but you raised that sign, and I don't care what it says, multiple times. It is way out of compliance with our rules as far as signs go. And importantly, there are people behind you who were here for this presentation in honor of the Congressman. So consider this your first and only formal warning. Do not lift it up again and do not disrupt this meeting or you'll be subject to removal pursuant to Rule seven and Rule 12. Mr. Herman, was your name called?
Was it F L O Y D, like Floyd Pumpkinhead? That was me.
Okay, so I'm being told by the staff that your name has not been called. So I will remind you that you have already been warned. So please wait until your name is called before lining up to speak.
The lady name was called, sir. You called that name. It wa- come on.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, in order to understand what's going on in CD 14 on multifamily housing, let us question with Mr. Cardenas and Congress whether or not it's right that the United States allows us to shout homeless people and simplify fucking faggot Marines, Army, Navy, and Air Force to sleep on our streets at a time when $218 million was wasted on family housing in CD two, on number two. But Bob Bloomfield don't give a fuck because if Bob Bloomfield in his comment earlier, when he said before us is going to get done, no, Cardenas didn't get done shit like Alex Padilla. We are still a broken family in CD 14 and all those wetbacks want our retribution of $60 an hour.
I don't know which item you're speaking to, but you've exhausted your one minute on whatever it is you're talking about. Please move on to the next item.
Then I'm going to go into item fifty, fifty-nine. Is that all right with you, Pumpkinhead? It's not about Figueroa Street, but it's, I'm sorry, fifty-nine's not special. You're right. Let me go into another item. There's so many in this booklet at the end of the year because you know, the physical budget, which you spend all the taxpayers' money on is going to get looted. Oh, twenty-eight. The Board of Public Works. Clean LA.
So item number twenty-eight is not open for public comment. So please stick to the items that are open.
You got all these numbers up there posted, Pumpkinhead? Forty-nine, forty-nine. Do I hear another number going, going, going? No. Sold to the administrative officer at the Los Angeles Housing Department, known as LAHD. But yet for years I bitched to the government. HHH, bitch, bitch, bitch. And not one single fucking family gets off the fucking street. Not one single fucking family from Mexico, fucking wetback, has the opportunity like me, an American, to live in this motherfucking country without disrespect that you don't find us the reports that Karen Bass and you white niggers too stole from the public. Inflating taxes is not the answer. They cannot afford to pay the taxes. They cannot live in $3,000 condominiums when they grow up.
General public comment?
Thank you, thank you. Clap, yeah, yeah. Watts versus the United States, three ninety-four, U.S. seven oh five, nineteen sixty-nine for the record. And I didn't get to Brandenburg versus Ohio, you dirty niggers. Send the Jews back to Israel, Bob. Fight your own fucking holy war. I'm fighting for the American people that you deny access to affordable housing, livable housing, and not that fucking bullshit of shelters, not that empty room of shelters, not that fucking sample money that you stole, Marquis E. Dawson. Give the American people the attitude that they will know that I, Armando Herman, for the record, a former fucking teacher, has the answer. That is bring every motherfucking nigger here and shout out to the government, you're fucking wrong. Forty-two S.C., nineteen eighty-three. Fuck you.
Your time has expired. So before we move on to the next speaker, I know that we have a lot of new folks here. I know that the, there's a group from the LAUSD Office of Government Relations and Student Leadership Council. Welcome to the meeting. I do apologize for the language that was used. It does not reflect the views of this council or the city, but during public comment, we do have to allow the members to speak. So I appreciate everyone's patience, both here and on the phones, to tolerate sort of this, whatever it is. Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to.
I signed up as Nadia Wilson and I'm here for general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Nadia and I'm here to provide a general comment on behalf of LUSD about crossing guards. Crossing guards are essential to elementary school communities by providing a safer environment for students who walk to school, encouraging families into considering walking as a safe option for their children and improves the community's overall health and reduces traffic. The crossing guard program not only creates extra safety, but it also creates a sense of community to everyone around, giving local residents a chance to actively participate in the safety and well-being of their neighbors, making sure our schools are more connected to their surroundings. When we invest in this program, we are making a direct investment in the well-being of our young children. Their safety and ability to navigate their communities should always be one of our first concerns. Thank you.
I'm here to advocate for the continuation of the crossing guard program, which is vital for our safety of our school communities. I attend a community school where we share our campus with students from grades K to twelve. Every morning, the crossing guard is there to help everyone safely cross the street and get to school. Children aged nine and younger are more vulnerable to pedestrian accidents and the presence of crossing guards can reduce that. As an older sister myself, I am very protective of my younger relatives, so knowing that they feel secure makes me feel secure. It is essential that we prioritize the safety of our students and I'm grateful for the funding that we currently have, but that's up until March 2025. So I really hope we continue this funding and thank you so much for your time.
I'm going to speak for a general public comment. My name is Matthew Vera and I currently attend a John Burrows Middle School. Every day, crossing guards ensure the safety of our students and families as they navigate busy streets on the way to and from school. Their presence not only prevents accidents, but also fosters a sense of security that encourages more students to walk or bike, promoting healthier lifestyles and reducing traffic congestion and schools for many of us. Crossing guards are more than just safety officers. They are friendly faces we see every day, every day, rain or shine, who build connections with our communities. Without this program, the safety of students, especially younger ones, would be at greater risk. I urge our leaders to continue supporting and expanding the crossing guard program because protecting students should always be a priority. Thank you for your time consideration.
Good morning. My name is Karina Luna and I'm here to speak on general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
I would first off like to thank the city council for providing funding for the crossing guard program, but I am here to urge for the city council to provide, to identify additional funding for the program for the rest of the academic year and beyond. Crossing guards are vital to ensuring student and family safety in our school communities. Students and their families should feel safe when traveling to and from school and crossing guards make that possible. There may be some students who are in elementary school and who are walking home from school alone because their parents may work. Crossing guards help ensure that this experience is safe. Additionally, there are areas where traffic lights are not present and crossing guards help ensure that these gaps are bridged. The program is essential in aiding students and their families. And speaking as a student myself, we would greatly appreciate if the council would consider identifying additional funding for the crossing guard program. Thank you.
My name is Tamara Gomez Quinones. I'm the daughter of LA City Commissioner for the City of El Pueblo, Professor Juan Gomez Quinones, who was under Richard Reardon. I'm here today to alert the council and to ask the city attorney to investigate the fraud that has been perpetrated by the DWP and by this woman who sisters have been extorting my family for over 20 years. I live in a home in CD 14 that my great-grandfather bought in 1911, over 110 years ago, when he immigrated from Parral, Chihuahua. This woman, who calls her, who currently calls herself Dr. Irene Vasquez, was allowed by personal friends of hers that work at the DWP to access my father, who is a former LA City Commissioners, account, the trust that controls my house that I've lived in for over 20 years at this point. They shut off, did an illegal shut off on the utilities in order to make the house uninhabitable. The DWP legal department has agreed it was an illegal shut off. They did so without notification. They did so without showing me their badge number when they did it.
Speaker, your time is expired. Speaker, your, your time is expired. We have to move on to the next speaker. If you have anything to hand to the sergeants, you can do so at the side. So Speaker, you're now delaying this meeting. Thank you. This is your first and only formal warning. Next speaker.
Yes, but I have a reasonable accommodation. I was told I have to ask. I'm, I'm under asthma exacerbation right now and so if I start having any kind of asthma episode, can you pause my time just so I can recoup and talk? I don't want 30 seconds of, you know, me having an asthma, if that's allowed.
So we'll take that on our submission, but for now, which items would you like to speak to?
Okay, since Bob, since, since Bob wants numbers, we're gonna do one, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-four, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-six, fifty-one. Hopefully we get to all of them and.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
Thank you. I owe me an apology, by the way, for yesterday, I mean, for Wednesday. Okay, well, first of all, I do want to see, I am going to see if Smokey Scan agrees with me on these points, so I'm going to be going back to Smokey Scan to see if Smokey Scan agrees with me. Number one, number one should, is the wrong, whatever you have in number one is wrong. It should be an investigation into what happened to taxpayer money, you know, for the, of the housing situation. There should be an investigation, you should be demanding it. So I don't know why that's not there. We'll see if Smokey Scan agrees. Number thirty, MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Here you go with all this gratuitous lighting up and, and, you know, and giving homage to whatever group. That's great, but I think MAD, you know, would rather you guys deal with actual, the problems that they want dealt with. And that's to help, like, like giving out liquor license like it's candy, you know, like it's crack. So maybe they would rather you not do that. I mean, we'll see if Smokey Scan agrees with that. Oh, Padilla's number thirty-one, the paddle boats. Yeah, we love the paddle boats, you know, but at the same time, right now, you know what we need? We need sidewalks that are manageable. We need all kinds of things. So the number thirty-two, forty-one, eighteen, the planters. This is an interesting one because at forty-one, eighteen, you're trying to make it, you know, like enforce it. Okay, and you know, Smokey Scan may, you know, totally agree with that, but he may agree with me here too, that you guys are bouncing back and forth. One day, you can't have planters because that's mean to the homeless and now, you know, now you don't want anything, you know, like now it's, you want to push the homeless out. It's like make up your mind either way, go either way, just make up your freaking minds. And since you now want to block the homeless, unhoused off the easements, I guess that's why the planters are not being moved at El Ron Hubbard Way. Do you think Smokey Scan, is that why the planters are there? Because now they, you know, they can't make up their minds. So they're letting the planters stay there in front of Scientology. Thirty-four, Power, the Public Works Party, I say no unless I can go. If I can go, then yes. Forty, okay, here's a civil service nonsense, and I'm curious what Smokey Scan thinks on this one. I think it's just a way for you guys to get all your freaking cronies jobs and that it's not fair to the people who actually want to legitimately go for jobs. So like you're going to say, oh, you worked for my campaign? Fine, I have, you know, the Bureau put this job for you. It gives you guys a way to be corrupt and I think Smokey Scan would agree with me, we don't like it. But we'll see on the replay, on the Smokey Scan replay. On the alfresco, the fee relief. Okay, are you kidding me? You're, you, you want to transfer money from the Department of Transportation for fee relief? Just cancel the fees. Like you don't have to have fees for the alfresco dining program. You can just say it's feeless, it's free. So why do you have to transfer money for fee relief? That sounds really like shenanigans. What do you think, Smokey Scan? I think Smokey Scan might agree with me. Public comment.
General public comment?
Thank you. Now we get on, okay, about the, let's talk about the call to Scientology. I've already informed you that Janet Wieland is, you know, she's trying to get people to initiate harm against me. So if anyone, you know, if anything happens to me, please look at Janet Wieland first. And let's get to the, the planters. I want, we want the planters moved. Can't we have that for Christmas? You have all this money you're moving around and everything. Why can't you move the planters? And even if you want to block the, unhoused at this point, if that's your intention, what about the ADA people? You, you guys are, that's, you're apparently aiming for the Para Olympics. One thing that you guys need, you don't need to go to France to figure out what they need for the Para Olympics. You have enough people here that are disabled that they'd be happy to help you out and tell you, okay? They need access to streets and sidewalks and elevators that are always going down at transportation. Am I right, Smokey Scan? Smokey Scan, please let me know. And to the new people, pay attention to the people are talking. You know, we vote you in, we can vote you out. Pay attention to us.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Chevel Kino. I'm under, I'm under general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
I'm a student from Bell Senior High School in the greater southeast part of LUSD and low-income area. I am here to speak about why the crossing guard program is a vital part of our school communities. As a student in elementary school, I remember how I benefited from having a crossing guard at my schools. It would help me feel safe getting to school every morning. I didn't live a very far distance from either school, although when I did walk, the crossing guards helped me and my mom ensure our safety from speeding cars or even distracted drivers. The overall safety of all students should be top priority, but the safety of young children should be at the top of that list as they are the next leaders of our city. This is why I believe the funding for the crossing guard program should be prioritized. We thank the city council for supporting the funding that would keep our crossing guards through March of 2025. However, we need your help with identifying additional funding that would help keep this program funded through the end of the academic year. Thank you for your time and advocacy on this issue.
Valentine Schindman and a general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Like me and my colleagues have mentioned, the crossing guard program is vital to the safety of the schools. As an LUSD student who commutes to school every day, I'm, I come in contact with crossing guards daily. Now, I call for the continued support of the crossing guard program and nearly every elementary school is surrounded by dense vehicular infrastructure. Now, I would like to remind everyone, it is the responsibility of the city to promote the safety of both the schools and the communities surrounding those schools. The crossing guard program represents a vital part of that safety. The crossing guard also represents to me a reminder that the school cares for its students and the parents of its students outside the school grounds. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Counselor. General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
I was going to say a couple of things, but I saw something in the horseshoe. A deputy that works for Bloomfield named Simi Park, one of the deputies came up to me and asked me, is that the Simi Park that's toxic? And I said, yes, that's the one that used to be a director for Dunn and got kicked down. Just don't trust her. She's just a terrible, terrible person. Also, it's always nice to see Mr. Honorable Nazarian. He's a true mensch. I'm going to say Happy Christmas. I know that is probably illegal these days, but you know, I'm going to say Feliz Navidad also. And it's always nice seeing Ms. Hutt, even though she doesn't like me calling her your honor. So that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Speaker. My name is Jason Figueroa. I'm a Smokey Scan singer.
Good afternoon. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Thank you. Number one. Number two. Uh, general public comment. Yesterday, I witnessed a little bit of civil, civil war in the city council. I heard our council member Monique and I heard talking about no confidence on the, on the council president procedure. So right now, I want to ask our council member Monique that you are the one who voted our council president. You are the one who chose the 24 inches to be the council president. Now you want to go back. Now you want to say he violated your procedure. He violated your voting rights. Well, the thing is, you chose your 24 inches and then right now you just have to suffer the consequence. You come with it. You know, like, like one said, well, you know, once you go 24 inches, you never go back. So seems like right now you want to go back to your old council president. You are the one who voted for that. So you know, if you want to find another 36 inches, find Sergeant Duarte.
Next speaker. Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, just general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
I'm Harriet Elliott and I agree with three-inch shrimp that he's being discriminated on Figueroa. I don't know about all the other stuff, but yes, that part, yes. J.R. Gillum of Texas is a reverend with the doctorate who works with prisoners. He's, the prisoners told him before they committed a crime, they were encouraged to commit the crime with voices. This is called voice to skull. This woman knows all about it. Says there's thousands of people with voice to skull in Los Angeles. Okay, he heard the prisoners say, rob, rob her, kill him. Gillum believed the prisoners, but they're never going to get out of jail for this, no matter who believes them. Anyway, this is called voice to skull, okay? This woman has it, okay? I don't have it exactly. I don't have voices of people, but there are thousands, she says. This woman was brought to orgasm as a little child, a three or four-year-old.
Speaker, your time has expired. Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
On Wednesday, CNN uncharacteristically aired the truth by interviewing Dr. Tanya Taj Hassan, who works with civilians in Gaza. And she said, quote, "This is not a humanitarian crisis. This is a genocide. When 70% of the population that are killed are women and children, when the population is starved of food, of water, of medicine, when more UN workers have been killed in Gaza than in UN's history, when over 900 families have been exterminated, when you have over 17,000 children have lost one or both parents, there was an orphanage that was targeted early this week. History books will be written on this and on countries will have to reckon, media agencies will have to reckon with their major role in the genocide of an entire population and in the destruction of humanitarian law and rule of order," end quote. None of you people have called this a genocide, not you, Mr. Soda Martinez, not you, Ms. Raman, and not you, Ms. Hernandez. The city council will never pass a ceasefire resolution, let alone call out this genocide by the ethno-fascist apartheid state of Israel. None of you people have souls. Merry Christmas, you genocidal psychopaths.
Morning, good morning. Chief Manalito, A.K.A. Candido Maris.
Which items?
The gentleman that gave Mr. Cardenas's first speech in 93 when he followed Mayor Reardon as he was running.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, sir. All items and public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items.
Yes, also, Mr. Adam Schiff, I advised him back when he first ran for, for office. Anyway, let's move on. Item thirty-two. Mr. Bloomfield, we must continue to take back our streets. We must continue to protect women and children, our seniors, our vets, but the government must take care of the border because anybody that's got the guts to come to this country to put up monies to get here, who have the spirit to fight to get here, I want to replace the people who are quitting and going on the streets and becoming criminals with that kind of an individual. So if we don't fix our borders, we still have a problem. But if we take people who come here and are willing to gamble everything and everything, I want those kind of people. I don't care where you come from. If you have that drive, I want you here. The other items on agenda, I want to thank this council because on item sixty-six on Wednesday, boy, that was a lesson.
Item number sixty-six.
Mister Dawson, you were outstanding on that. Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Speaker?
Yes, sir.
This is not on the agenda, so please stick to the agenda.
This is on all items. Wait a minute, wait a minute. See? That's what happened to Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Parks.
Okay, so I'm going to move you to general public comment. I've asked you to stick to the agenda. You have not done so. So you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, let's go to Public Comment then. Anyway, it was fascinating. I've been waiting for this for a long time. The only other gentleman that, uh, would do that was, uh, Mr. John Ferraro, Mr. Hal Burnson, and Mr. Elletori. Uh, what I saw Mr. Dawson do was, woo, he took you, he taped my, uh, your mouths, and you guys had to do exactly what he did. So, Mr. Dawson, you got the balls, brother. You, I, I liked what you did on that day. Uh, and for those of you who now know what it's like to have tape over your mouth, I have a right to speak. I have a right to be heard, 'cause I only talk about those things that affect this city. Thank you. And good yontuffin, Merry Christmas.
Before the next speaker.
What fake name did you use today?
Good afternoon. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Yeah, we got the asshole train pretty good here. So let's see here. Number thirty. Are you against drunk driving? How the fuck are you supposed to party if you can't get behind the wheel of the car and get home and slap the old lady after the party? I can't believe item number thirty. Fuck you, Bob Bourbonblowd and Blinky Hernandez over there. I can't believe this. Four hundred and thirty-eight dollars to light up City Hall? I wanna light up City Hall in favor of drinking a little bit and driving. After all, it takes the edge off. Less instances of domestic violence, take a little edge off, and less instances of road rage if you take an Ambien and a little of vodka. Right, Tracy? Yeah. And then item thirty-one. Fuck item thirty-one. Uh, God, fat-ass Monika wants to have a paddle boat? That big fat cunt couldn't get into six fucking paddle boats. How are you gonna support all that weight, all that fat? This is ridiculous. You have to have reinforced paddle boats. These aren't reinforced. They're only for skinny people. Yes, anybody here skinny? No, they're all fat as fuck. Yeah, so let's refer item thirty-one to the Committee on Obesity, chaired, of course, by Amelda Padilla, who's gaining weight every second.
So you need to connect your comments to the items, or I'm gonna move you to General Public Comment.
Well, hold on, sir. I'm talking clearly.
Go ahead. You can continue.
Clearly, I'm talking on thirty-one, because Padilla was a cosponsor. But you don't have your glasses on today and can't read the agenda. Now, thirty-two, relative Bob Blobbleblowd, that son of a bitch, is only gonna ban parking in the rich Jew area of Deering Circle and Independence Avenue. That's in where those wealthy campaign donors live, right, Bob? That's not where those Latino people live. Bob couldn't give a flying shit about anybody with a surname that's Latino. Fuck you, Bob. And then thirty-four, the Tom Bradley Corruption Room is gonna be used for a corrupt Public Works Party. Tell me, Bob, is the homeless from two to five invited? Is the public invited? How about you, Unisus, you so-called socialist D E I? Can we go in there and get free? No, it's a private fucking party, just like the city council's a private FBI investigative party. And of course, they wanna have, how much money? How much are they gonna pay for the late Tom Bradley Room? Why, he'd be rolling over in his grave, Tom Bradley. If he could see you dumb sons of bitches being targeted by the FBI and you're still stealing, he'd tell you to take a break.
General Public Comment.
And the public comment, why are so many council members dressed like they're going to a P. Diddy party tonight? Have you noticed this? Unisus, known as Blinky? Wasn't that her gang name, I believe? Yes, blinking like a blinking light. That blinking light used to be at the P. Diddy parties, from what I heard, that you're next to going to the red room. And then, of course, McCosker. Why, McCosker, are you going gay, McCosker, with your blinking jacket? When did you go gay, Buckethead? I didn't know. You like to stick. I thought you liked to use the carrot. And then, of course, let's see, Hugo, what an ugly fucking sweater. Holy shit, what a piece of shit. Now we've got Tracy Park. Why, she's dressed like one of those women over at that ranch near Las Vegas. So again, people remember, there's no party like a P. Diddy party. Fuck all of you.
Time's expired. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Chloe Young, and I am a Chatsworth Charter High School student in District Twelve, and I'm also the vice president of the, of Office of Governmental Relations Student Leadership Council of L U S D. Today, I'm here to support and advocate for the Crossing Guard Program as it plays a vital role amongst schools all across the city of Los Angeles. As a student attending a Title I school, I've seen firsthand the importance of safety regulations, especially for young students and low-income families. Many students in my neighborhood either take public transit or walk to school, which could be hazardous without crossing guards regulating the traffic flow. At a local elementary school near me, there's even a sign saying, "Drive like your kids live here," to remind drivers that children could be crossing the streets since crossing guards aren't there to do so. I believe that it is crucial to implement these programs to reiterate the importance of livable streets and safe communities. Thank you to the city council for supporting this, and, um, please support the program. Thank you.
I'm a student from Maywood Center for Enriched Studies, and I'm here to speak about why the Crossing Guard Program is vital for our school communities. I remember how, eh, elementary, I was never afraid to cross the road, and it was all thanks to the crossing guard we had. There was never a day of school that he wasn't there, protecting us from pedestrians driving dangerously or that were distracted. He always made sure that the students in my school and myself could safely cross the road. I can confidently say that this is a story that multiple students can relate with, and is exactly why we should keep funding this program, not to mention the parents that heavily depend on this program for their children to get to school and home safely. This program protects the lives of thousands of children, ensures their safety, and so it's important to keep this program funded through the end of the academic year. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see you continue supporting this program.
Once again, my name is Ethan De Guzman, and I'm a high school student at the Science Academy STEM Magnet. Uh, I'm, uh, as many of my colleagues have already stated, I'm here to emphasize the importance of continuing the Crossing Guard Program. Every day, thousands of L U S D students, uh, must cross busy streets to get to school. Crossing guards ensure that students get, can get to school safely without the fear of traffic, uh, dangerous traffic, and creates a strong sense of community. I still remember my local crossing guard. He greeted us with a smile every morning and a high five. Although I didn't fully realize at the time, his job was crucial in ensuring the safety of everyone who crossed that street. Now, as more and more students have, uh, have to cross busier and busier streets, it is important to me and the community that everyone has the same positive experience that I've had. We are grateful for the city council for supporting, funding through March twenty twenty-five, but as my peers have, uh, already stated, it is important to secure additional resources to extend the program to ensure the safety of future students. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, council members. My name is Emmanuel Slis, and I'm a proud student of Maywood Center for Enriched Studies. I am here today to advocate for the continued support and funding of crossing guards across the city of Los Angeles, whose role is being critical to the safety and well-being of our school communities. As a former elementary student, I experienced firsthand the positive impact of crossing guards on creating a safe environment for students, families, and staff. They play a vital role in ensuring students feel secure walking to and from school and directly contribute to a supportive learning environment. While Los Angeles Unified School District has made significant investments in educational programs, such as the one you see today, the city of Los Angeles plays a vital role in ensuring that the Crossing Guard Program is invested in, and by allocating necessary funding, the district can work in, with the city in tandem to prioritize student safety and enhance overall school performance. Thank you for your time and for your continued commitment to the city and the safety of our students.
Um, my name is Nikolai Robyn. I'm signed up for General Public Comment.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Okay, hello. My name is Nikolai Robyn, and I would like to provide a general public comment on, um, the allocation of funds for more crossing guards at L U S D. So I'm a student from Old Three Middle School, and, uh, I have a story to tell about why it's so important. So a few years ago, back when I was coming back to fifth grade, uh, my elementary school was on intersection, and one day after school, um, where we, when, before we had a crossing guard full-time, uh, one of my friends and I were walking, and his foot got run over by a driver who didn't see it and, uh, didn't know when to stop because of the approaching line of kids. So, uh, because of that violence, we had to get, um, uh, we all, me and my parents and a few other people came to mobilize to get a security guard, I mean, a crossing guard, so everyone could feel safe. So the fact that I had to take a violent outcome like that to get change is really sad, and that's why we need to have more funding in general, so stuff like that doesn't happen again. Uh, we thank the city council for supporting the funds. Thank you.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Good afternoon, people of the city council. My name is Hunsuka from Hale Charter Academy in West Hills, and I'm here to advocate for the safety of children of Los Angeles under the General Public Comment. Near our school, safety is a huge issue, and I believe that having crossing guards would be quite essential and quite beneficial to our community. As drivers are quite distracted and don't pay attention to pedestrians, crossing guards can help ensure safety for our school communities. The risk of pedestrian accidents can be reduced if there is an effective funding for crossing guards near schools and essentially in, increase driver awareness. For unsafe risk areas that parents don't feel safe about around these schools, these crossing guards can provide protection and a sense of security for worried parents. Thank you.
So eighty dollars per night for me to flee the room that I was given due to extreme harassment retaliation, sexual harassment of pregnant women, ADA noncompliance, no drinking water available, nobody's allowed to have wheelchairs over in C D fourteen Women's Shelter, run by Volunteers of America. Eighty dollars per night, per head, where I can't go and I can't sleep, I can't eat because I'm being food poisoned as part of the retaliation. My cat had to go to a kill shelter. My ESA had to go to a kill shelter because they were retaliating against me and threatening me. Eighty dollars for that. That's item forty-four. Okay, moving on to item thirty-nine. There is no investigation into these abuses. So if you wanna have instructions for the Housing Department, talking about evaluating these projects for homeless people, please evaluate the abuses happening at the Volunteers of America-run Women's Emergency Domestic Violence Shelter in C D fourteen. Thank you. I would love for that to happen. That's my Christmas wish as a homeless woman, fleeing domestic violence. Now, for item thirty-six, Kevin De Leon's district, District fourteen, there is a women's shelter in that district, and I would like you to investigate the extreme retaliation, abuses, intimidation, ADA noncompliance, no drinking water, there's a bathroom that says I can't poop in it, and they won't fix the facilities. And it's bathroom number two, so you can't go number two in bathroom number two. It's fucking ridiculous. Okay, so now moving on. This is a long agenda. For, uh, item thirty-two, forty-one eighteen is an extreme violation of the Fourth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment. Fourteenth Amendment is equal protection. Why is Scientology allowed to keep their crap on the freaking sidewalk where ladies, nice ladies with wheelchair who give me cat food, she can't get through? However, homeless people or women fleeing domestic violence like me, we are gonna get swept away from our, keeping our belongings while we're fleeing from shelters like the one in C D fourteen run by Volunteers of America, Los Angeles. By the way, the grievance coordinator threatened me for writing a grievance on the toilets. He said that maybe this, maybe this shelter is not for you. He threatened me for making a grievance report on the toilets, and then the staff refused to give me further grievance reports. That's a violation of my First Amendment right. It's also extreme retaliation. It's illegal. So I would like you guys to please investigate these fucking issues if you wanna say anything about homeless people. Now, moving on to my general public comment.
So you have one minute.
Thank you. Psalms one eighteen from the King James Version of the Bible. It's relevant, 'cause I'mma pray for you, you niggas, okay? God's mercy. Oh, give them thanks unto the Lord, for he is good, because his mercy endureth forever. Let Israel now say that his mercy endureth forever. Let the house of Aaron now say that his mercy endureth forever. Let them now, that fear the Lord say, that his mercy endureth forever. Y'all a bunch of fucking fake-ass niggas who won't help the fucking homeless. I am starving. I am homeless. I can't go back to the goddamn shelter that I was matched with. By God's grace, I was matched with that fucking shelter. God bless you, people. I hope he touches your fucking soul, because you need to be saved. You need to fucking repent if you say anything about homeless people ever again. Fuck you. Fuck the city council. Fuck Los Angeles.
Next speaker.
Hello, everybody. So as my peers before me have mentioned, the Crossing Guard is an integral part of our education system. As an older sister who walks her younger brother to school every morning, the Crossing Guard is the first face we see, who offers not just safety for our community, but also a sense of kindness and trust to start our day. Crossing Guards do more than just stop our traffic. They create a culture of care. They teach patience to drivers, confidence to kids, and remind us all to prioritize what matters most, the safety of our children. By supporting Crossing Guards, we're investing in safety, community, and the daily experiences of every family. Let's make sure they continue to guide and protect the future of our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
So I believe the Crossing Guard Program would enhance safety measures for students, staff, families, and community members. I think the Crossing Guard Program should also be expanded to middle school and high school. We want to prevent another occurrence of what happened at my school site, where a student crossed the street on a crosswalk without crossing guards nor traffic light and tragically lost his leg. Luckily, he survived, but we shouldn't have to wait for something this drastic to occur to make a change and enhance safety measures. This is especially important for those in higher-risk areas where student safety is in jeopardy, such as the situation at Hollenbeck Middle School and Roosevelt High School. Since they are in close proximity, it gets very congested by car and by foot. There have been many, um, occasions where students get injured or run over. And staff try to intervene to get cars to stop while students are crossing, but they're often ignored. Uh, I hope you consider this. Thank you.
Um, so hi, my name is Ada Bordenon, and I would like to provide a public comment on Crossing Guards. Ever since elementary school, I walked to school and back home and often had to pick up my sister from school as well. When I had to go through the transition from walking home in elementary to middle school, it was a shock since there were no crossing guards. I almost got hit several times by erratic U-turns, people turning without checking for best pedestrians and ignoring stop signs. Crossing Guards helped organize those cars and gave way for our students to cross. In addition, firing, uh, them would be firing hundreds of people from their jobs who not only help kids, but also free up congested traffic by acting like a traffic light. There, there are more accidents in middle schools than, in my middle school than in my elementary school, and I saw two happen right in front of my eyes, and thankfully no one got hurt. But because there is so much traffic and everyone is in a rush, they often forget about kids that walk, and crossing guards are there to remind them. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Thakur Singh. I'm a student at the Leadership and Public Service Virtual Academy, and I am here today to speak in support of the Crossing Guard Program for our schools and communities. Uh, although I have been learning virtually for, uh, several years, I still remember the importance that Crossing Guards had while I was in elementary. Having a Crossing Guard allowed me to go to school and go home feeling safe and comfortable, and that enabled me to learn comfortably, knowing that I would have someone trusted watching, watching me and supporting me, uh, as I came and left school grounds each day. Um, and I'm sure that my experience resonates with many other students as well. On behalf of other students across L U S D, I would like to thank the city council for providing funding for the Crossing Guard Program through March of twenty twenty-five. However, it is important to provide sufficient funding for this program for the remainder of the school year. I ask that the city council identifies that additional funding for this important and common-sense program to keep it funded for the remainder of the school year. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Um, Yoshi Ordonez, General Public Comment.
You'll have one minute.
I am the president of the L U S D Office of Government Relations Student Leadership Council, and I think I speak on behalf of all of my fellow council members that have spoken today in stressing the importance of expanding the Crossing Guard Program for our schools and our communities. Specifically, success in these programs has come from L U S D's Safe School Traffic Program that has implemented speed bumps, slow zones, and most topically, the implementation of five hundred new Crossing Guards for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year. However, I come from a high school in the San Fernando Valley of over three thousand students adjacent of over three thousand students adjacent to an elementary school and daycare, and many of my colleagues are in the same position. And it is further evidence that we are advocating for additional funding for further crossing guard implementation past March to the end of this school year. I would like to thank this council for your consideration and awareness on this issue.
Hi, I'm here to advocate the crossing guard program. As a student in elementary school, I remember how I benefited benefited from having a crossing guard at my school. It would help me feel safe getting from, to school every day. This program helped me and my parents feel safe when letting me go to school. My parents couldn't always drive me to school, and my mom's biggest fear was that an I, I, and seven-year-old child back then would cross three roads filled with cars with no one to help me or guide me. But, but when my mom saw a cross guard that was also my coach, she was relieved and happy to see me cross and be more socialized since I came from a foreign country. I would like to ask the city council to please keep this amazing program and to keep funding it for more years to come. Thank you so much, have a nice day.
Hello, my name is Vardui Chitirkin. I go to Grant High School, and I would like to provide a general public comment about why it is crucial to have crossing guards at school. I believe that there should be funding to, uh, to the crossing guard program as it'll keep students safe when walking to school. This will allow for better attendance, and students will feel comfortable when walking to school, and it will allow parents to feel more comfortable sending their child to school even when they're not able to take them themselves. Another reason why I think there should be funding to the crossing guard program is because students will see a familiar face when going to school, allowing for a greater feeling of security and community. Thank you.
On behalf of LAUSD, I would like to share some insight on why the crossing guard program program is essential for students in our community here in LA County. I'm an eighth grader from Woodland Hills who has lived here my entire life, and I remember so many instances that the streets near our schools were dangerous, especially during morning traffic, when drivers are usually distracted on their phones or are in a hurry not to be late to work. Young students, especially in elementary schools, are especially at risk of car accidents and other unexpected injuries because they aren't able to predict when it is safe and when it isn't to cross the streets. Not to mention, many of these students come from low-income families, and their parents are too busy working hard at their jobs to drop them off at school. It is these people who really deserve the opportunity to have street guards who are a vital part, who are a vital part of our everyday lives, whether we concede or not. For this reason, I really believe the funding for this program should be prioritized. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, danielgust.substack.com, all items and general public comment.
Okay, good afternoon, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items, go ahead.
Yeah, so two of these items are, are kind of intermingled, so I'll speak for two minutes because they relate to both.
Okay.
The crossing guard item and the Mothers Against Drunk Driving item. Are you guys aware that you have this year, and apparently still are, outsourcing drunk driving responses from the LAPD to a very well-city hall-connected nonprofit? Of course, by the way, public, when they say it's a nonprofit, believe me, somebody's profiting a lot. Called Urban Alchemy. Well, I'd like to find out what Mothers Against Drunk Driving, who you curry favor from in terms of publicity, I'd like to know what Mothers Against Drunk Driving thinks about your outsourcing drunk driving concerns or people in distress to Urban Alchemy, which doesn't have the authority to pull people over, which doesn't have the ability to arrest people. And why are you exactly doing this, especially with a group that is very politically connected to all of you, your predecessors, Karen Bass and her predecessors? It's the same thing with the school crossing guard items, you guys. You are outsourcing security from the cops to people who could be run over. What good is a crossing guard if you're letting some nonprofit handle these issues? It's really quite perplexing. I'd like to know why you did it. And by the way, just wait till the first kid gets killed by a drunk driver, and this city council has to explain to a jury why you outsourced drunk driving responses or distressed public. I actually wrote about this on danielgust.substack.com earlier this year.
Someone asked that you move on to another item?
But, yeah, uh, gosh, what should we do now? Um, well, uh, you want to talk about liability? The liability crap that you guys have, come on. I am going to start addressing these budget, these budgetary issues because you guys have misallocated at least a billion dollars from wrecking parks, and you want to talk about sending things back to committee, sending things back to commissions for liability and dangers that you're doing? I'm going to start forcing a whole lot of you and not just the elected officials. In 2025, danielgust.substack.com is going to force your hand into accountability so that you're at least going to have to explain yourselves and not just, by the way, where's Mr. Fabel? Mr. Fabel's gonna be case number one about transparency that's coming up. I'm gonna move on to general public comment. This coming year, on danielgust.substack.com, I am going to not only start pulling accountability, I'm going to start forcing people. If you don't want to answer my questions, you want to dodge public records requests, I'm going to start forcing through other methods to get, force the city to respond to dangers that they're creating that, it's gonna be eye-opening, and the public is gonna see how it's done firsthand because the LA Times doesn't do it, that's why I'm here. You want to talk about lying about animal services? Oh, by the way, what happened to your animal services, uh, GM? I, I thought Karen Bass said that Stacy Daines and the commissioners were the best people available for the job, and that's a load of crap. Well, guess what? We're gonna start forcing accountability, not just for animal services, for the city attorney, the LAPD, and in many other ways, danielgust.substack.com. The stories will continue on your latest break.
Please, so, please issue a warning to this person?
The speaker who goes, who signed up as, I believe, Sister Payasa, I have heard you yell out multiple times since we've ended public comment. Consider this as your only first informal warning, do not disrupt this meeting. I cannot hear what the clerks are saying or what the council president's saying, and he is right behind me.
All right, what's next?
I got a bad leg here. You got a bad leg, Django. Okay, so thank you for reading that whole fucking motion verbatim, really appreciate it. So you see how much power you've given CD eight over your lives. Is this what you want? Do you want the man in the green jacket to take over the whole city? Come on, Bob, this guy's got too much fucking power. He's gonna appoint four hundred people, it's more than the fucking mayor. It's more than the mayor. But one thing we want to do is take current price off of all the committees because he's gonna be having his conviction next year, so save yourself the paperwork. Finally, that's one fucking ugly sweater.
Next speaker, next speaker.
Start the time, nigga. One minute. Did you hear the category of items that we just got through speaking about? And yet, to my left here, Zabel didn't argue about not one motherfucking thing on this shit. We talked about homelessness, we talked about pipelines, we talked about lights, we talked about every motherfucking thing of responsibility that you dumb niggas are not accountable for because like you said, where is the money tree, nigga? Where does the money exist? We're in a deficit, and yet every motherfucking items, even that stupid dumb-looking pumpkin face up there without his glasses will know that we don't have a budget to afford his salary because he sucks a big dick like the one that I don't have in my hand. And that's the reason why you all suck a dick.
Next speaker, next speaker. Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry, please, one minute.
Okay, uh, but first I have my accommodation request. I'm having asthma episodes, so if I start coughing or needing inhaler, please pause my time and let me recoup, and can you start my time again?
So, go ahead, can you restart her time really quick? And before you begin, again, we'll take it on submission, we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, but I mean, I just will let you know that I am, it's just asthma, but I may need to stop. Okay, all right, um, you didn't put my time back. I'm gonna go beyond the time because you're cheating me my time. And, uh, Bob tried to do that yesterday, he owes me an apology for trying to take my time, well, no, he took my time yesterday because I couldn't remember what number my item that, which I was on topic for. And Ms. Rahman still owes me an apology too, um, so just reminding you. And so does Hugo at this point, because those planters are still there. Um, I'm thinking you're all a bunch of Scientologists at this point. When it comes to, although I love, uh, Mr. McCloskey's jacket, that is so amazing. I just love how you embrace the ugly sweater day. And not saying it's ugly, but it's fun. Where, uh, Mr. Hugo's trying to hide his under, you know, like a suit, so not cool. Anyway, um, about the mental health, um, hospital thing, you know, Scientology's gonna be against it because they don't believe in mental health, they don't believe in psychiatry.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Hey, it's, uh, Rob Kwan. I just want to note how absurd this is. You are abusing Rule twenty-three. The Brown Act says that you have to have a need for immediate action. Commuted committee restructuring? The, the council presidency is irrelevant in that, that's the authority of the council itself. Even if you were not council president, you could have made that resolution then. And really, you could have introduced that at the Tuesday meeting or the Wednesday and put it on the fucking special. And instead, you're sneaking it through, forcing the city clerk to read out six-plus pages and sneaking in that you're eliminating the Governance Reform Committee. What a joke. This, this is just goddamn silly. Bro, what are you letting them do?
Got options, oh, thank you.
I will be, uh, very fast, but also want to be very intentional. Um, it is with a lot of excitement, love, and sadness that I share that today is my chiva staff's, Yvette Serna's, last day on our team as she is beginning a new and incredible journey, uh, and pursuing her dreams. Yvette is on her way to get her master's in cultural heritage at the University of Rome. I've known Yvette for over twenty-five years. We first met and became friends at Monovista Elementary School in Highland Park, and since then, we have stayed friends throughout our lives. There was no one else that would have been good enough to lead our CD-one team and bring it and grow it to where it is today. She has incredible ability to make you feel seen and heard. She is one of the kindest people I know. And if there's anyone in this world who deserves to live their dreams and go on phenomenal adventures, it's her. She has given this city over ten years of public service, working in the offices of Councilmember Rahman and City Controller Ron Galperin. I'm eternally and profoundly grateful that she was brave enough to come and lead our CD-one team. I'm so proud of her for being brave enough to start her new journey and becoming a part of the small percentage of elite Latina women with their master's degrees. I'm so proud of you, and I can't wait to see where you're gonna go. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much, uh, Councilmember Hernandez, and thank you so much, uh, Ms. Serna for your service, uh, to the city, giving some of the best years of your life to the project, uh, that we all know and love as the City of Los Angeles. We appreciate you so much, and we will miss you in the city, and we will miss you as a resident of the Eighth Council District. So, thank you all so much. Okay, all right, what's next?
Yesterday, uh, city approved a fifty-five percent salary increase for the hotel worker, but LAPD officer cannot even receive a ten percent increase in their salary. So this is, uh, this is our Councilmember Hernandez called Equity Equality DEI, uh, number sixty-five neighborhood and the community. Uh, when we are talking about Neighborhood Community Enrichment Committee, I spoke with that committee on numerous times. I reported, we need more toilet, I reported, we need more, uh, law enforcement, we need more parks, we need more safety services when the people are doing a night wa, uh, a night walk. However, our council member, specifically the one in charge of the Neighborhood Committee, never listened to the feedback. So, uh, uh, regardless that, uh, numerous times, we were asking for more safety, more toilet, more clean water, more clean food, when people like the Sister Hayasa, they do not have housing, uh, we need more housing. However, the problem is our Neighborhood Committee never listened to the, uh, voice of the public. Maybe because I'm a Caucasian, maybe because I'm Israeli, that's the reason why everybody continued to discriminate me, but I'm so proud to be a Caucasian Israeli and support Israel.
That's right, so let's see, number sixty-two deals with sexual abuse litigation. Now, who been fucking who under color bethold? That we gotta hire all these Jew nigga motherfucking attorneys to represent our corrupt city council, blah, blah, and blah. You over there in that goddamn budget? Now, that's why Unicef is sitting over here, she want to hear from you. Why we're hiring all these motherfucking outside firms at seven hundred dollars an hour when you could hire Jacobian Myers for a lot less than that? This meeting is brought to you today by Jacobian Myers, it's about time. So how come we, let's do this, since we got, we got Isabel here, let's hire her old law firm over there in Sherman Oaks to take over all this shit. That way, she could launder the money legally and get a percentage as a partner, what do you say?
Please move on to another item.
I say, okay. All right, see that? And then you need a conflict interest waiver. Now, Isabel knows what that shit is on item sixty-two. She knows it's dirty, 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 dirty fucking money. You have a motherfucking attorney representing one fucking thing.
You've exhausted your minute on sixty-two, please move on to another item.
I did, motherfucker, sixty-three, the goddamn waiver. Why are we waiving conflicts? How many disgusting fucking lawyers do you have? Two hundred and sixty-three thousand lawyers in California with a bar card, and you can't get somebody unconflicted? I say, we go to Tracy Park with that disgusting outfit on and hire hasn't outside cancel.
This is your only warning, stick to the agenda items or you're gonna forfeit your speaking time.
I'm trying, sixty-four, I'll get to the point, fuck item sixty-four in the asshole, all right? Is that on topic? Yeah, then we get sixty-five, CD-one, Unicef's actually doing something right. And she took off that crazy necklace too. Now, Central American Culture District, she's gonna use this excuse to go and launder money to fix sidewalks and streets. Let's give Unicef a hand in legal money laundering. That's what it is, she learning from the best, she learning from niggas like me, she learning from other niggas like Armand, and of course, Django, known as Steven, is teaching us how to launder money. That's why we do what we do. Now, let's get to sixty-six, the biddy-boom-boom, blowing up shit. Let's pay everybody, finally, have a terrible holiday and a rotten fucking.
Speaker, your time has expired, next speaker.
Well, as you heard, fucking pumpkin head, we got these lawsuits under twenty-eight USC Section nineteen eighty-three over the city personnel policies and practices in which a dickhead like you, a moron, under bar license three seventeen, two seventeen, sucks a big one because you don't get it right. United States District Court has allowed me to say you're a dickhead.
Okay, so there is no general public comment, this will be your only warning.
Right, that was, that was on item number sixteen.
Stick to the agenda items or you will forfeit your speaking time. Go ahead.
I'm talking about the sexual abuse, that you protect these fucking politician niggas like Jose Luis Wezar, who fucked our government and fucked our taxpayers.
So your time is forfeit, and here's the reason, next speaker. This is not general public comment, I've asked you to stick to the agenda items, you have forfeited your speaking time. Next speaker. Mr. Herman, you were asked politely to stick to the agenda. This is your first and only formal warning, do not disrupt this special meeting. Okay, so please vacate the podium, this is your only formal warning.
This is your only formal warning. You are continuing to disrupt this meeting after being issued a after being issued a warning to not disrupt this meeting. Mr. Chair, Mr. Herman is eligible for removal.
Okay, goodbye, Mr. Herman. Have a nice holiday. You're excused. Goodbye. You're excused. Sergeants, show them the door. Bye-bye. Happy holidays. Get out. You're continuing to discuss, you're continuing to disrupt the meeting. You have been removed. You've been warned, you've been removed. Goodbye, goodbye. Leave. I I don't want to see you anymore. Get out. Thank you. You know, it takes.
Mr. Herman, you were warned during the special meeting. You did not adhere to that warning. You are excused by the chair.
Bye-bye. Okay, next speaker.
Go ahead. You have three minutes for the items. Can you start her time over? Thank you. Don't, we'll, I know, once your mic is on, we will start your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you. Okay, uh, number sixty-two, that's a lot of lawyers needed for sexual abuse litigation. What is going on? I have one question. Is this city hall or ditty hall? Like, seriously, that's crazy. When it comes, I I when it comes to the one about the perinatal, um, you know, mental health hospital, I'm all for like increasing anything that helps anyone seek mental health. But I do want to warn that, you know, I don't want anything Scientology related to it or trying to get their programs in there because the truth is, they don't believe in anything. They do not believe in psychiatry. They think it's the enemy of the people.
Can you pause her time? And for the record, for anybody who is not here, Mr. Herman is proceeding to continue to disrupt this meeting by blowing a whistle. Have a happy holiday, sir.
Merry Christmas, Mr. Herman.
Your time was paused the entire time. Go ahead and resume. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and they do not believe in psychiatry. So if we're trying to get mental health, you know, moving forward and getting a better quality, better access to mental health, then you guys need to disengage with Scientology. You guys are so in bed with Scientology. Not all of you, I'm sure there's one or two that's not, but there's some that are. And they don't believe in mental health help. They believe that how you get mental health help is you bombard your body with niacin. You had, then you go for like five days, five hours a day for weeks on end in the sauna. That's how you deal with purging yourself, and that's how you deal with mental health. That's not mental health, so please be careful of that. Um, we still want the planters removed and.
So, Speaker, I'm not sure which item you're speaking to.
I forgot, I don't have, my bad. And but can I still give a reminder that Ms. Rahman and.
So I'm gonna ask you to stick to the agenda items.
Oh, man, apology. Okay, I got it. Okay. Yeah, and the the waiver thing of the conflict of interest, that's really curious to me. Like, why would you have to waive? If there's a conflict of interest, there's a conflict of interest. You don't waive that. Like, it just makes it look, but you know, I'm not surprised. Heidi, from what I hear, is being investigated by the California Bar, so and so are two of her people under her. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that's part of it. It's showing suspiciousness, okay? Because what is the, you know, why would there be a release of a conflict of interest? Um, and that shows me that there's some like shenanigans going on, and I want Heidi to come here and tell us why we would just dismiss a conflict of interest. And I know you can't, you know, because you work for them, so you can't say anything. And I think it's not, you shouldn't be able to call me off topic on that because that's a conflict of interest, and you're not, and so you have to waive those conflict of interest then. But that's the beginning. It's a ruling thing, you know, you start with this conflict of interest. It's like that, you know, and then it's next time it's gonna be another conflict of interest, you know, and all the, you know, and then why, and why, I want her to answer, why do we need outside attorneys for all this sexual abuse? Why?
Speaker, your time has expired.
For items sixty-nine and seventy-one, these are closed session items regarding LAPD, and one of them regarding them blowing up a neighborhood. It's already cost us twenty-one million dollars in settlements, plus the millions more that we had to spend to aid those families, and now we got more litigation. And just worth noting that when Jim McDonnell was in front of y'all, he said, yeah, that's maybe something we could have done differently. And you wonder why you end up here with LAPD litigation. You know, I I just look at these officers. We we have an LAPD officer last year who drove drunk, had no license, shot his gun, and left the scene of the shooting, and he got a five-day suspension. In my mind, let's give him some mandatory minimums. Anybody convicted of a DUI or domestic violence on the force, automatically fired. Be a good idea. Uh, and on that note of officer discipline and litigation, Mayor Bass killed one meager attempt to change that. Um, and now we see her again sitting on appointments for the Charter Reform Commission, four months delayed. I I've had three reporters in the last month ask me if Mayor Bass is trying to sabotage Charter Reform. And initially, I laughed at that. Now, the more and more I see this council, see what's going on, it does seem like she's not the only one sabotaging that effort. Maybe the big dog in those chambers is trying to sabotage it as well. Sixty-three, bye-bye, Marquise, uh, is on conflict of interest, and I I just look at this body, and you're biased by those those values. I've been asking the Ethics Commission for Kevin DeLeon's ethics training, the proof that he completed ethics training when he came in office. They don't have it. So this is just a note for for our two new council members. Welcome. Uh, if you haven't already, make sure you fill out your Assuming Office Form 700 and complete your ethics training. Uh, sixty-two is on outside counsel, and this body is begging and begging for more litigation with their just disregard of the Brown Act. Yesterday, we had Emelda Padilla crying and saying that the council president's office should meet with every member's staff to talk about the wage ordinance. Now, there were some weird backroom deals, not denying that. But what Emelda Padilla was describing was a spoken wheel textbook violation of the Brown Act. And then today, you all rubber stamp MHD sham process with the Brown Act and Rule 23. Beautiful, beautiful stuff.
So, Mr. Kwan, that is not on the agenda for the special meeting. So please stick to the agenda for the special.
Outside counsel, I'm talking about what's gonna cause you to end up in court and need outside counsel. And, um, you know, there are opportunities for us in the public to carry out a private right of action on ethics violations. I did that with Kevin. I can actually get fifty percent of the penalty if I prevail in court. Maybe you need to do that more often. Maybe you need to consider that with those two charter appointments that were put on the Charter Reform Commission and never filed the Form 700.
Mr. Kwan, your time has expired.
Serve the city, spread joy and good tidings throughout the holiday season, and we will reconvene next year. Happy holidays. This meeting is adjourned.